Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to open the meeting of the City Council for Thousand Oaks for the night of June 9th. Would you please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag?
Yeah, I can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Pena Zappson at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Gillette?
Here.
Mayor Glancy?
Here.
Okay. Request for continuous of any public hearing or agenda item. Mr. Mittnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff is requesting to continue agenda item. It's the moratorium item. I don't have in front of me the number. I'm sorry. I think it's on 10A.
10A?
Is it 10A? Yeah, we're going to request to continue that to a date uncertain at this point in time. Okay. This is the time for special presentations of our meeting, so give me a minute to get down there to the diocesan. We'll proceed. Thank you. In our first presentation this evening, I'd like to invite Christina Palmer, Principal of Maple School, to join me. Most of us are very satisfied with the quality of schools that we have in our community. And tonight, it's our privilege to honor one school who, for the last three years, has donated the proceeds from their fundraisers to those that are in need, more need than we are ourselves. That's a very admirable thing to do, and I salute you. Christine, would you please, oh, let me mention, over the last three years, they've contributed $30,000, which is absolutely amazing. So would you please tell us something about the program?
I'd be pleased to. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight. This is a rare and wonderful opportunity. I'm very proud of my school and my students. These are two representatives of my school. I'll introduce in a moment. Character education is an important part of all of our schools. There are many ways that we go about the business of learning about character education. It's embedded in our curriculum. And in conjunction with that, we certainly like to make it real to students. And one of the ways that we do that is through service learning at Maple. Some of the ways we've done that have been to go out into the community and give flowers and gifts and sing to some of our shut-ins and people in convalescent hospitals. In addition to that, what we have done, as was mentioned a moment ago, is, over the last three years, we've had the pleasure and privilege of working hard to raise money through our Jog-a-Thons, not for our own school's benefit, but rather for the benefit of the community as a whole by honoring the Make-A-Wish of tri-counties. And what we've done is, the last two years, we were able to raise enough funds to grant the wishes of two children from tri-counties each of those years, for a total of $20,000 in those years. And this year, we raised over $9,000. We again made the wish possible of one of the Make-A-Wish children in our area, a child who attends Westlake Elementary, actually a second grader. We were able to grant his wish to go on a Disney cruise. And in addition to that, we also raised enough money to donate a little over $4,000 to ride on therapeutic stables, which was a wonderful, wonderful treat as well. As I said, it is the third year that we've done it. Our two top fundraisers this year are Mr. Drew Hald, who's a fourth grader at Maple, and Ms. Monroe Ferris, who's a third grader at Maple. I'd just like to say that character education is something that we certainly want our students to learn to do at school, learning things like respectfulness and good citizenship. But we also feel very, very privileged to be able to take that out into the community and do it on the larger scope as well, so that they learn it for a lifetime.
Good?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is for a group of young people who are the grand prize winners of Canadian Open Space Trails Advisory Committee, the COSTAC, the essay contest. These winners are with us this evening, and each of them will be presented a certificate. Before we make the presentation, I would like to ask COSTAC Chair Mike Langton and Elaine Hagan to tell us more about the contest and introduce the winners. Mark?
Yes. All right. Good evening. We are here, as the mayor said, to honor the winners of the, the grand prize winners, excuse me, of the Canadian Open Space Trail Education Days Riding Contest. And this year, we had 1,560 students from all 20 elementary schools attending the 2009 Trails Education Days hikes and workshops. And the weather couldn't have been better. We've just lucked out this year, and every aspect of the program went very smoothly. We had 93 volunteers and agency staff that participated as well. A total of 990 students from 18 schools submitted contest entries, and each letter is addressed to a volunteer or staff member the student worked with or took place, took part in one of the workshops. And so I'd like to now introduce the creator and co-coordinator of Trails Education Days, Elaine Hagan.
Hi, thank you, Mark. Hi, yes, I'm Elaine Hagan. And I'm very happy to say that, from the 990 letters that we received, we had a group of eight judges who worked tirelessly to select the five grand prize winners, as well as 20, I'm sorry, two winners per school for prize winners. Each year, grand prize winners receive a cash prize of $50 plus Trails Education Days t-shirt. And the other two winners from the schools each receive $25 prizes and t-shirts. Also, the grand prize winner's teachers receive $50 as well. So that's an incentive for the teachers to get the students involved in the riding contest. So I'm very happy to introduce the grand prize winners. First of all, unfortunately, because it's such a busy week, the last week of school and so much going on, only two of the winners are here tonight. I'll first introduce, I will read the names of the winners who couldn't attend. First is Mitchell Klein of Lang Ranch Elementary School, whose teacher is Andrea Ackerman. The second is Anastasia Perrinis of Sycamore Canyon Elementary School. Her teacher is Matt Arnold. And the third winner who could not attend is Victoria Rosskey of Westlake Hills Elementary School, and her teacher is Steve Latshaw. Now, we do have two winners I'm happy to introduce. The first is Erica Adam of Westlake Elementary School, and her teacher is Mary Schroeder. The second is Ally Stewart of Westlake Hills Elementary School, and her teacher is Steve Latshaw as well. So we're very, very proud of you, and your letters were great, and we hope you enjoyed the day and that you'll continue to come back to the open space regularly. Thank you.
Erica and Ally, it's my pleasure to give you these certificates of appreciation for your great effort and your really nice, very nice essays. Thank you so much. And also, I have a pen and the seal of the City of Thousand Oaks. Congratulations and well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, right side up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our third presentation, we're recognizing one of our own employees tonight for outstanding professional action. We're fortunate to have this very capable person that shares her experience and talent to help keep Thousand Oaks one of the best cities. The recognition tonight is from the League of California Cities, which is an organization considered to be the leader in advocating the interests of California cities. It's no small group, and the people they honor really are deserving of the honor. They have chosen this year Connie Hickman, our Human Resources Manager, as the recipient of the Professional Excellence Award. So I would like to introduce Ed Wallenberg, Range Rider for the League.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Glad to be here. My name, as Mayor indicated, is Ed Wallenberg, and I'm here tonight representing the Employee Relations Department, one of the eight municipal departments in the League of California Cities. As also alluded, I'm a retired city manager, and I'm also doing volunteer work as a range rider for the League of Cities. So I see Scott pretty regularly at meetings around. Each year, the Employee Relations Department selects one individual from a pool of applicants to receive the Professional Excellence Award. This year, the department invited submissions either to recognize a shining star for an individual project, or a veteran megastar for either an individual project or a galaxy of contributions to the human resources profession. While the department received a number of excellent nominations, which always makes the selection process a difficult one, the department did choose Connie Hickman, who was nominated by Cheryl Jackson, also in your Human Resources Department. Not only that, Connie is being recognized as a veteran megastar, which is indicated means a whole galaxy of projects and contributions to the city and to the profession. Her achievements in the field of human resources are vast and are more than worthy of receiving this award. Likely, many of you know that some of her various achievements include, first, the 2007 League of California Cities Helen Putnam Award for the city's succession planning program. Also, in 2007 and 2008, the State of California Fit Business Award for the city's employee wellness program. And in 2009, the Workshop Wellness Award from the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors and implementing a 12-month employee development program, offering over 60 courses each year. An amazing accomplishment. I think a paragraph from the nomination maybe says it best, and I'll quote, "The galaxy of human resources shines more brightly because of one veteran megastar. If you looked at the entire galaxy and found a solar system which had the brightest stars, planets, and awe-inspiring big-picture view of the rest of the galaxy, then you would be looking at the solar system that encompassed the city of Thousand Oaks. Within that system, you would find the biggest glow coming from the Human Resources Department." So help me and join me in congratulating Connie Hickman as a veteran megastar for her contributions. Here we go.
I'm going to thank the League for this recognition. I also want to introduce the HR staff, who give about 150% on everything they do. So if you guys wouldn't mind standing. I also want to say just briefly, under Scott Mittnick's leadership and with the teamwork of the executive staff, we've been able to do an amazing amount of things in the last couple of years. And we have department heads who take their time after work to teach classes, to instruct wellness courses. We're just very blessed in that teamwork. And I think also, I would like to really thank the council for your vision in making this a city where excellence is the standard. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to work here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Over here.
Where is it? Oh, yes, Mr. Mittnick.
Your city manager. I'd just like to point, the reason we decided to do this tonight is Connie deserved this recognition, but also, the fact that she was acknowledged for her achievements in this profession during a very difficult budget timeframe is quite admirable, because the HR profession is taking a lot of hits at this time. This organization's lost 10% of its general fund positions, so it's tough, but they're doing a great job in retaining employees and recruiting from within, that type of thing. Just wanted to point that out.
Appreciate it. You know, it's particularly, it's particularly enjoyable and pleasant for us to honor Connie tonight, because she really has brought an awful lot to the city. And she does a wonderful job. She and her staff do a great job. She's also a great example of the quality of staff that we have in the city and how well they work and how much they give of themselves. So it's a pretty good situation. Our, finally, finally, to conclude special presentations this evening, we have a recent KEY-T3 video title, "What's Right in Thousand Oaks." As you look around you, you've got to think there's an awful lot right. KEY News is doing a month-long series of special reports on what's right in the tri-county cities, and Thousand Oaks was chosen for one of their segments. So we all know Thousand Oaks is terrific, and we have quite a few things right in the city of Thousand Oaks. So would you guys please roll them?
In Thousand Oaks, there are thousands of special people and places, like the Civic Arts Plaza, and the people who are passionate about all it has to offer.
The children have a great service here. They bring buses in from senior housing. And they all come, the senior citizens are here.
It's not exclusive at all. It just includes all generations, and it's wonderful.
Subscribers to its distinguished speaker series enjoy seven nights with some famous faces, from Pulitzer Prize winners to world leaders. Former President Bill Clinton will take the mic on this stage in October.
In Thousand Oaks, it seems like there's a place for everyone to belong to, and we found two of those places here on Jan's Road in Thousand Oaks for two special groups of people, the young and the young at heart.
300 to 500 active adults come to the Global Senior Center every day. We found many of them playing bridge and discussing and debating.
Saves my life. I've been retired for 33 years, and what would I do? Sit at home. Here, I come every Tuesday and Thursday. We sit and discuss every subject in the world. We solve the problem, all the problems that the White House can't solve. And we fight like the dickens. At the end of it, we are friends, old friends.
Just a few steps away is the city of Thousand Oaks Teen Center. We found out that teens and seniors make great next-door neighbors.
Most recently, we did a senior versus teen pool tournament. Now, as you can imagine, they have an advantage of age. So we have 80-year-olds playing with 15-year-olds. But it is a really great program, and the staff that oversaw that this year did an exceptional job. And it's a great opportunity. You know, so many of the teens don't live near their grandparents, or do the grandparents, you know, live by their grandchildren.
The event is only one of the many activities at the teen center. Sports, music and dance, concerts and excursions. The center offers teens so many things to do, but just as important, gives them a home away from home.
The teen center itself, like, they have all the big activities that work here and all that stuff, and the big attractions, but like, it's the daily things that are important. Like, the kids that are here all the time, they don't have a place to go.
You can come here, it's like another family for me, because everyone's just so welcome.
Places to feel welcome and call home, people to call friends, and friends that become family. These represent what's right in the special city of Thousand Oaks. It's Rachel Sennis for K News.
That was a great little film. It was nice to see it. Would the clerk please announce public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Eighteen people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. I'd like to say, before we got started, that at the opening of the Police Resource Center that's over in the Oaks, I had an opportunity to spend a great deal of time conversing with one of our constituents, and I'd like to applaud his great interest in the resource center and what it brings to our community. So I would like to say hello and thank Mark, seven-year-old Mark Tichetta, for his time that he spent with me. So, that said, first we have Richard Williams, followed by Eric Sternod, maybe, followed by Jennifer Koch. Mr. Williams, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Richard Williams. I live in Newbury Park. I'm here representing the committee that organizes the Thousand Oaks Arts Festival. Last year, we celebrated our fifth annual festival, and we're working hard toward our sixth annual festival in September, the end of September of this year. And I'm really here to thank the council for its generous and continuing support to our arts festival. We wouldn't exist without you. I've said that many times to every organization I ever talked to, that this belongs, this festival belongs to the city. And it's featuring the visual arts, the performing arts, and the children's art experience that we think, in a three-legged stool environment, is a wonderful way to present the arts to the whole community. And it's a family affair, and everybody gets to come. And I think each of the council members here have come to the festival and participated in it, and I know you found it to be enjoyable, and we are gathering a reputation as being one of the best around. And being in this theater, I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to attend two events that tell you how good the arts are in this community. One was the Richard Carpenter Scholarship Competition, in which nine young people, three from middle school, three from high school, and three from college competed on this very stage for scholarship opportunities, and they were extraordinarily good. And the second one was performance by the Thousand Oaks Symphony, which featured soloists in classical music from age 11 to age 19, and they were absolutely outstanding performers. So we're grateful for that opportunity we provide to children in this area, in the field of performing arts and in visual arts as well. So with that in mind, I have a small gift that I wanted to give each of you, and it is a composite picture we had made of the festival, and it also shows Frankie Avalon and James Darren, his friend, I don't know if you remember James Darren from the movies years ago, his family, and then all the features about the festival. There's the fun run, and the children, and the visual artists, and Diana Monkwe's son is in here. I know you know who Diana Monkwe is. He's playing the French horn. So with that in mind, I want to just hand this to you. I don't know if you want to come down to get it, Mayor, and I'd like to come to you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Richard, thank you very much, and we really appreciate all that you put into the community in this pursuit in particular. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Eric Sternod, Jennifer Koch, followed by Patricia Koble.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Eric Sternod, and I'm the Executive Director at Interface Children Family Services, here to speak with you very briefly about the 211 service. 211, as you know, is an easy-to-use 24/7 information and referral line, which is used by Thousand Oaks residents every day. Last year, we provided referrals to 21,000 callers across the county. It's a very efficient service, but this year, we are expecting, this coming year, we're expecting to see a shortfall of about $147,000, $157,000. We recently put together a 211 task force. Supervisor Kathy Long is on this, as well as law enforcement leaders, the mayor from Simi Valley, several city managers. That task force is overseeing a request coming to your city for funding for next year, as well as all of the other cities. We are asking for, and we have an existing request into you, for $7,500 for this coming year. And for this, you get 24/7 response for every resident in the city. That represents about six cents for each Thousand Oaks residence for the entire year. So it's a pretty efficient way to get services to all of the residents of your city. Last year, 1,648 TO residents called into 211, and they were connected in with counseling resources, housing, shelter, food, any kind of resource they were calling for. It is a way that we can help leverage other programs and other funding for your residents without any cost to the city of Thousand Oaks. And again, that's all for a total of six cents for each resident for the entire year. About 85% of the country is now served by a 211 program, and about 85% of our state is served by a 211 program. We have currently both soft and hard commitments from the cities of Camarillo, Port Juani, Simi Valley, Moore Park, and Ventura, and we hope to include Thousand Oaks as a supporter of this very effective service that is bringing information and referral to your residents, connecting them with the types of services and supports that they need. So I thank you for your time and your consideration about this important program. Always happy to take your call if you have questions about 211. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sternod, hang on a second. I want to ask you a question. At this time, do you have any hard or soft commitment from the County of Ventura?
We have received $35,000 last year from the county. So far this year, we have commitments totaling $22,000, and that does not include any general fund commitments, which we are also expecting. We have a request out to the county of $75,000, and their commitment of $35,000 last year was an effort to try to encourage cities to share some of the costs. Those, cost sharing is based on utilization, is how we put that together.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Jennifer Koch, followed by Patricia Koble, followed by Sharon Moret.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy and council members. My name is Jennifer Koch, and I'm a resident of Newbury Park, and I'm here representing the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation in Ventura. And I'm here to invite each of you and homeowners in the city of Thousand Oaks to attend a free foreclosure prevention clinic on Saturday, June 20th, at our Ventura Neighbor Works Home Ownership Center. This event, which will be hosted by Cabrillo and Neighbor Works America, will give families at risk of foreclosure the opportunity to meet with a representative from their lender or servicer to discuss resident in the city. That represents about six cents for each Thousand Oaks residence for the entire year. So it's a pretty efficient way to get services to all of the residents of your city. Last year, 1,648 TO residents called into 2-1-1, and they were connected in with counseling resources, housing, shelter, food, any kind of resource they were calling for. It is a way that we can help leverage other programs and other funding for your residents without any cost to the city of Thousand Oaks. And again, that's all for a total of six cents for each resident for the entire year. About 85% of the country is now served by a 2-1-1 program, and about 85% of our state is served by a 2-1-1 program. We have currently both soft and hard commitments from the cities of Camarillo, Port Juaniemi, Simi Valley, Moore Park, and Ventura, and we hope to include Thousand Oaks as a supporter of this very effective service that is bringing information and referral to your residents, connecting them with the types of services and supports that they need. So I thank you for your time and your consideration about this important program. Always happy to take your call if you have questions about 2-1-1. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sternod, hang on a second. I want to ask you a question. At this time, do you have any hard or soft commitment from the county of Ventura?
We have received $35,000 last year from the county. So far this year, we have commitments totaling $22,000, and that does not include any general fund commitments, which we are also expecting. We have a request out to the county of $75,000, and their commitment of $35,000 last year was an effort to try to encourage cities to share some of the costs. Those, cost sharing is based on utilization, is how we've put that together.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Jennifer Koch, followed by Patricia Kobly, followed by Sharon Moret.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy and council members. My name is Jennifer Koch, and I'm a resident of Newbury Park, and I'm here representing the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation in Ventura. And I'm here to invite each of you and homeowners in the city of Thousand Oaks to attend a free foreclosure prevention clinic on Saturday, June 20th, at our Ventura Neighbor Works Home Ownership Center. This event, which will be hosted by Cabrillo and Neighbor Works America, will give families at risk of foreclosure the opportunity to meet with a representative from their lender or servicer to discuss their situation. Lenders participating at the event will include Bank of America, Countrywide, Chase, Washington Mutual, and Citibank. HUD-certified counselors will also be there to assist homeowners. This event is part of an ongoing homeownership preservation campaign called A New Way Home. The campaign is designed to educate the community about the dangers of abusive real estate and lending practices. Specifically, the campaign focuses on the development and implementation of educational foreclosure prevention workshops, and supports successful one-on-one counseling that provides homeowners with specific, actionable plans that can help them avoid foreclosure. Our goal is to assist as many homeowners as possible to reach a positive solution with their lender. We are prepared to assist as many as 500 families at the event, which will take place this Sat-, or next Saturday, June 20th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at 702 County Square Drive in Ventura. The goal of this event is to help families preserve their homes and maintain their current quality of life in our community. We will hold these sessions in both English and Spanish. For information and to make a reservation, we encourage people to call our Neighbor Works Home Ownership Center at 805-659-6868. I have left flyers detailing this information with your city clerk, and I invite the public to call us for a reservation. We hope to see you there.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Patricia Kobly, followed by Sharon Moret, followed by Andy Levine.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Kobly. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here tonight representing Interface Children Family Services. I'm on the Board of Directors of Interface. For those of you who may not know, and I'll quickly say that Interface is an independent nonprofit agency dedicated to advancing the well-being of children, families, and adults by providing an array of social services that strengthen family life and promote community commitment for Ventura County. An important service that we do provide is the 2-1-1 Social Services and Disaster Service. This is a 24/7 telephone service. It needs to be continued, and it needs funding, and I know a lot of things need funding right now. However, I think the situation that we have, which is to request funding for this specifically based on the utilization of each individual city in the county, is a fair one. I know my expectation, as a resident of Thousand Oaks, a 32-year resident of Thousand Oaks, is that such a service will be available for my family and other families in case of a disaster, and for important information for social services and family assistance. Our funding request is modest, and I think it will create and maintain an effective year-round 24/7 agency and source of information for residents in the county. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moret, followed by Andy Levine, followed by Ralph Metz. Good evening.
Good evening. Sharon Moret, Newbury Park. The rotation of the mayoral position was not done fairly. All of the council members were elected overwhelmingly by the voters, and all need to be respected as such. The council members need to respect each other. Although they might differ in policies and interpretations, they all love our city, and they are loved by their voters that are of the city, and we need to have this situation corrected, because we expect our council people to be models and to be fair. Okay? Another thing is, around our city, we notice a lot of office vacancies, empty new offices, office parks. I see them all the time in Newbury Park. That land would have been better used as for senior apartments. And I would like to see if, when someone comes here and wants a high rise of offices, mixed usage on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, that you look at all the office vacancies before you approve any such animal. Okay? Also, I noticed in the paper something about sports arena, sports center in Lang Ranch, and that $3 million perhaps is going to be going towards that. And for 20 years, the citizens have indicated that they want a bowling alley here. I think that needs to be prioritized, because there are plenty of baseball diamonds, plenty of soccer fields, the population is aging, but even the junior council, junior city council has indicated to you that we need a bowling alley, and I would like the council to come online with that, and that they could perhaps encourage someone with $3 million and use that as seed money, as a loan, but nonetheless to get it on board. And another thing is that the pay of city administrators, basically the city is aging, so please make sure that you only have reasonable fees, because people cannot pay like they perhaps were before. There's a lot of constraints on money that is coming in, and so basically, please consider that when it comes to pay for administrators, et cetera. You'll see people lined outside the door for several blocks if they offered jobs at reasonable prices for city administrators right now. And you can perhaps hire some wonderful candidates, and they could use this as a stepping stone for their vice presidential salaries. But we really need to keep things in line so that costs are reasonable. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Andy Levine, followed by Ralph Metz, followed by Bill Pemaral.
Good evening. Andy Levine.
You want to step over to the tall one?
Oh, okay.
A little bit easier.
Andy Levine, Newbury Park, California, for the mayor and city council. I just want to say just a couple of things. We really don't need to be spending 90, over $90,000 for a consultant for the lakes. What we could do is take the publics and just have a forum, and you can hear from the public what they want. We don't need a consulting firm to be doing what the public can do out here, and we can be using the 92 or over $90,000 for that. And this is for Thousand Oaks, too. We really need some more entertainment. Instead of making baseball diamonds or soccer fields, we need some bowling alleys. We maybe need like a golfing, a miniature golfing place for the families around here. So that's all I really want to say, that we need some more entertainment out here, because we either go to the valley, or we have to go to Ventura, or we have to go to Simi Valley, and that's wasting our gas, so. And that would bring money into here. And the theaters around here, they're gonna have to start lowering their rates, because no one can afford to go to the movies for like nine bucks, or people can go over to Blockbuster for like four or five dollars. So they're gonna be losing a lot of money, too, because people are gonna say, "We can wait a couple months before it comes out." Okay, link, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Appreciate it. Ralph Metz, followed by Bill Pemaral, followed by Robert Jackson.
Hi, my name's Ralph Metz, a resident of Thousand Oaks. I wanted to thank the city council for their continued support of the Lang Ranch Park. I think it's a great thing for this side of Thousand Oaks. 14 years ago, when we were moving here, we saw the sign for that park, hoped our kids would enjoy it. Now we're hoping our grandchildren will enjoy it, as well as myself. Love the outdoors. The plan of it is great. It covers a lot of more things for the community, not just baseball field, as mentioned by previous speakers. In the overlaps that you do see for the park, you can see the void in that side of Thousand Oaks. And I didn't know the city was in the business of trying to build bowling alleys or other things like that. Got a couple of good ideas for some businesses, but that's, you know, private enterprise. So again, stay the course. Please build the park.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pemaral? If y'all would position yourselves down here in one of these reserve seats, it'll make this process go a little quicker. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Bill Pemart, resident of Thousand Oaks. I live in Lang Ranch. I'm here in support of the Lang Ranch Park for the TO Little League. We had our five-year-old in the program for the first time this year, and it's really good for the family. Appreciate the fact that the city's on board with us, and we hope that you guys stay the course and allocate the funding so we could see that park relatively soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight. Robert Jackson, followed by Travis Ferris, followed by Andre Perrin. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, mayor and council members. I've been a member of the community since 1981. Very proud of it. I decided to raise the children, the family here after going to college, because of the wonderful community we've created, the proper planning, and the beauty. I am speaking in favor of the community park in Lang Ranch for several reasons. A little dissatisfied in hearing all the opposition, something I've been counting on. My whole family lives in Lang Ranch. We've been excited about it for years. One of the things that really, after seeing the designs and looking through the beauty and the great architecture, you know, I noticed 125 acres has been allocated, of which only 25 acres or 20% plans to be developed, leaving 52 acres or 41% to be landscaped, and 71 acres or 57% of the total project to be left in a semi-natural state. That makes me happy, gives us an opportunity to have a very safe, beautiful environment to spend with our children, something that I've respected greatly in the community. I know the times are tough, dollars are tight. My understanding is, the money has been, was allocated. I would like to see you guys stay the course and finish this project for my generation, my children, and hopefully their children, to remain part of this community and enjoy the good work you guys have done and continue to do. And I just want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Andre Perrin. That's not true. Travis Ferris first.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor and council members, thanks for having me today. On behalf of the residents of Thousand Oaks, my name is Travis Ferris, and one of the folks of Thousand Oaks that is excited about the Lang Ranch Park project, as many of us are here tonight. I want to thank you for continuing to move forward with the project. I know that it's in the best interest of the community to continue with this project. I know the funds have been allocated, and I'd like to thank you for continuing to move forward with the project. My family and I look forward to being able to take advantage and enjoy the park sooner rather than later. So thank you very much.
And thank you for being with us. Andre Perrin, now it's your turn, followed by Chris Sessig, followed by Michael Wolfert. Wolfert.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, and city staff. My name is Andre Perrin. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. My comments are specifically on Lang Ranch Community Park, and even more specifically, I did want to talk about baseball. Thousand Oaks Little League served the community for 41 years. This means approximately 25,000 children that have gone through our program, promotes health, youth fitness. We're also the oldest sports organization in the community that does not have a permanent place to call home. We currently lease property from Kalina Middle School. This park has been on the map for over 30 years, long before the homes were ever built surrounding the park location. The homeowners that bought the homes on the ridge, they signed documents stating that they acknowledged there was going to be a park. There was, in that location, which includes many different sports facilities. Lang Ranch Community Park has been on the Conejo Recreation and Park District's master plan for decades, and this is the last of the multi-use parks that they plan to build. The northeast portion of Thousand Oaks does not have such a park, thus the homeowners must drive across town to get to another location. Increases traffic, increases the carbon footprint. 80% of the kids that play in our program live within two miles of the park. The park will serve the entire community, many different activities, and thanks for your support, and we're looking forward to the continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Sessig?
Yes, thank you. My name's Chris Sessig. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I just wanted to thank you for the continued support of the Lang Ranch Park. We specifically moved out here a few years ago for the quality of life of Thousand Oaks, as well as the park system. We came from the San Fernando Valley, which we just do not have this opportunity. And we knew that the park was on the map. We've been anticipating it. We specifically moved within a close proximity to the park location, so we can enjoy the facilities. So we've really been looking forward to it over the past few years. Currently, I've got two children. We have to constantly schlep across the Conejo Valley looking for various facilities. There is not one specific location that has everything. Some parks have baseball diamonds and a basketball court, but no tennis courts. There's no roller hockey facility close by, although there is an indoor facility. But, so many of the things that we all look for in a park can be found in one specific location. That's going to reduce traffic tremendously. I know there's a lot of folks like myself, parents that we talk to that live towards the north end of the Conejo Valley, must drive quite a distance to get to some of these facilities. So this would be a great help. We think it's going to continue the great quality of life that we have here in Thousand Oaks that many of us moved here for. So I just want to thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Michael Wolfert, followed by Sue Lindemann, followed by Russ Hashimi. Michael Wolfert apparently isn't here? Or is... No. Sue Lindemann?
Good evening, mayor and council people. I am here tonight on behalf of Alzheimer's Disease Awareness. Before I get started, may I ask if anybody on the council has a family member or knows someone with Alzheimer's? Thank you for sharing that. Alzheimer's is a disease, and it is an epidemic at this point. My backgrounds, my credentials are, I'm a founding board member for Ventura County in the 80s, and I'm vice president of Ventura County at this time, and I'm also on the California State Council for Public Policy and Advocacy as their secretary. I facilitate support groups at our Goble Senior Center, which yes, is an absolutely marvelous facility. I work with families all over the country. I have walked in the shoes of Alzheimer's, because my husband had it, and that is what sparked my interest in this disease. At this time, I'd like to tell you, by the time I am finished, approximately two and a half to three people in America will begin the journey of Alzheimer's, just while I am up here talking to you. Presently, we have a stat of 5.3 million people in America with Alzheimer's, and that is increasing. Alzheimer's has absolutely no boundaries, no racial, ethnic, sex boundaries, and no age boundaries. At this time, we are finding people, someone coming down with Alzheimer's in their early 60s is considered early onset, but we are very quickly, the numbers are adding up to people in their not only 60s, but 50s, 40s, and 30s with Alzheimer's. We today not only have children of people with Alzheimer's, and the greatest percentage is spouses with Alzheimer's, but now we're adding parents whose children have Alzheimer's. That is horrific. We must make people aware that there is help out there, and that we do need funding for this. At this time in Ventura County, in 2008, we had 12,500-plus people with Alzheimer's. It's anticipated that in the year 2030, which is only 20 and a half years from now, we are going to have 26-plus thousand. are going to have 26-plus thousand, which is an increase of 110 percent. And these are, you know, a lot of people are misdiagnosed, but a lot of people are not diagnosed or will not be diagnosed. Anyway, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ross Hashimi, followed by Marcus Garcia, followed by Ron Segal. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. My name is Ross Hashimi, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Alzheimer's Association for the Central Coast Chapter, which includes Ventura County as well. And the reason I'm here is just because recently our association published a brochure about facts and figures, about some numbers and some statistics of how the Alzheimer's disease is going to affect all of us in different communities within the next generation. And the lady here has, and you all are going to get a copy, and the facts and figures are rather alarming. One of them is that by the year 2030, Alzheimer's will double in the United States. That means in the state of California alone, we are going to have 1.1 million families that will be dealing with the disease. And with a city like Thousand Oaks, which, you know, I'm sure you think ahead and you plan for the future, I was just, you know, hoping that there would be some plan to deal with this disease also, because at this time, Alzheimer's is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States. And since there is no cure for it, it may be increased also. By the age of 85, the statistics tell us that almost one out of every two of us will have Alzheimer's, and that's almost 50 percent by the age of 85. And now, with the age expectancy which is going higher and higher, most people will reach age of 85. And we are hoping that within the next generation, or sooner, there will be a drug or some pills that could attack this disease. At this time, there is none. And the cost, you know, we, our associations have been, you know, we do some fundraising. It's a national association. We have been getting help, you know, from states, from the counties, and now with the state of California being in the shape that it is, we know we cannot count on the state very much. So, we are hoping that the local cities will be supporting the association. It could be any kind of support. We could be linked, you know, the association could be linked to your website, you know, to raise awareness, or any way that you can think of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hashimi. Marcus Garcia, followed by Ron Segal, followed by John Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Marcus Garcia, Thousand Oaks. I'm here in front of you today to support the Lang Ranch Community Park. I lived at Thousand Oaks for roughly nine years, and I want to thank you and the council for your support for the community park. I'm a homeowner that lives adjacent to the park, that, right behind the park, and I'm truly supportive, and my family's supportive of this park, and my kids are supportive of this park. As you're aware, this park is going to fill a void in the community, and it's also going to help support a healthy, active lifestyle for Thousand Oaks residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Ron Segal, followed by John Nelson, followed by Clint Matkovich. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council people. Before I get started, I just feel it out of full disclosure, the park supporters should know, other than being baseball supporters and advocates, that the park is going to be in the first stage, nothing but a baseball complex. And until it's funded the rest of the way, there won't be any picnic areas, play areas, or anything else for the general public. With that said, I would like to talk about the actions of the city council in concert with the Kaneo Parks and Recreation District with respect to the park. Their actions have been just concerning and perplexing, especially in light of the 2005-2006 grand jury investigation. I'd like to cite a couple of examples. Conclusion 5 of the investigation said that the city government of Thousand Oaks often gives the appearance that it fails to operate transparently and professionally. There is a perception that many of the decisions are decided in advance of city council meetings, and that the meetings are essentially a public formality. The examples cited were the forced resignation of Mr. Gatch, the recruitment process or lack thereof of the city manager, Mr. Mitnick, and the decision not to hold an election to replace the late councilman, Mr. Masary, and appointing Mr. Glancy to the vacated seat. The grand jury recommended that the city council should revise the code of ethics and avoid the appearance of Brown Act violation to ensure the transparent conduct of the city business, to address the public perception of favoritism, to deal with the appearance that the decisions are often made in advance of city council meetings, and to address the perceived lack of objective decision-making. First, let me say that I'm not accusing the council or CRPD of violating the Brown Act. However, I am specifically saying that with respect to the Lang Ranch Community Park, there is a strong perception of favoritism. Let me explain. The president of Thousand Oaks Little League, who has a strong vested interest in the park, was appointed with little notice and little publicity to the CRPD Board of Directors, over 15 other applicants during a critical time in the deliberation of the park. This same gentleman is on several city committees, and he has also given and received political support from some of the members of the city council. I'm not questioning this gentleman's ability or qualifications or obvious dedication to community service, but you have to question the benefits derived from these relationships. The grand jury also commented on the decorum of the board, stating that the city council, there's a history of adversarial relationship. First, I would like to go on, but I would like to say thank you to Mr. Gillette, Mrs. De La Peña, and Candace Hoag, who are willing to have constructive dialogue with me in their busy schedule. On the other hand, there's a board member that I've tried to contact on numerous occasions, and he has failed to return my calls or emails. I think that we as citizens are owed a monicum of our respect and courtesy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Nelson. Good evening, John. Clint Matkovich and Lisa Becker.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to speak about something that's not on the agenda anymore. I guess that's item number 10. I don't know how all this works. I'm kind of rookie with all this. So, anyways, I brought some stuff to hand out to you anyways. I don't know if this will reappear. I came in, heard it's not here, but I figured I've already missed the first half of the Laker game anyways. Might as well sit and hear what the other half of Thousand Oaks has to say. Other than that, that's probably all I have to say. Got some information for you. If this comes up again, hopefully I'll know. And by the way, I kind of like the idea of Thousand Oaks Little League having their own fields, being a passport member on there, and I think they deserve a spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, for being down here. Clint Matkovich, followed by Lisa Becker. And good evening to you.
How you doing, sir? Hawaiian shirt day down here, huh? All right. Clint Matkovich, June 20th will mark my 28th year in Thousand Oaks. I'm here to address the overspending, from my perspective, that the council has recently been taking part in. I went online and went to the Thousand Oaks Acorn website and typed in council spending, and I'd like to read a few of the figures. $96,500 on a consultant to study the lakes project and why it's not profiting. $673,288 for the city's day labor site. And now, the recent, the most recent expenditure is $83,000 for an election analysis to ask us if we're willing to pay more on city services. I don't have to mention in great detail, our country is experiencing a very hard economic situation, and although we in Thousand Oaks are better off than many communities in this country, we're not immune, and we need to tighten our belts. And I think that the first people that should take a cut are the council members, because another figure I found was that the council, a council member earns $19,000 a year salary plus health benefits. And that's in addition to the career they have off the council. So, why are we paying for this, especially during a hard economic time? It doesn't make any sense to me. Regarding the Lang Ranch Park, and I know I'm going to draw some controversy here, I like baseball. I support the Thousand Oaks Little League, but I think that the expense during this time is biting off a little more than we can chew right now. I think maybe if we sized it down, reevaluate the plans, and come up with a, we can come up with a less expensive project, and everyone will be happy. But I, $5 million for starters, and I understand it's about 15 to 20 million. I could be wrong when it's all said and done. Maybe someone can correct me if I'm wrong. I'd also, like, as a resident, I'd like to know where I can find out about any Native American studies that were conducted on the site regarding burial or archaeological projects. Is there someone that can get back to me on that? Maybe I can email somebody. I can leave my email and telephone number with somebody. I'm sure everybody has it by now. So, that's all I have for tonight, and so, thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. Lisa Becker, followed by Rick Lemo.
My name's Lisa Becker, and I've been a citizen of Thousand Oaks my whole life, and I'm here tonight about the baseball fields for Lang Ranch. I just want to say that for my family and for many families, it's more than baseball. It's about the socialization, it's the exercise, it's putting a community together. For me, it's brought my family closer. My kids are very, very shy, and baseball brings them out. And so, I just, please stay the course and thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Ms. Lemo, you are it.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and staff. First of all, I can tell you that as of 15 minutes ago, the Lakers were leading by six, just about the end of the first quarter. But that's not what I'm here for tonight. First and foremost, I want to thank you for removing the item from the agenda until we all have a chance to learn a little bit more about it. I think it was item 10A. I appreciate that very much. I know that there are a lot of business people and regular citizens in Thousand Oaks that would like to have a chance to weigh in on that with a little more notice. Second of all, I also appreciate the fact that you're going to ask our opinion on taxes. A little shocked, that doesn't happen very often, but I'm glad you guys are doing that. So, thank you for that. And I would like to, I wasn't planning on this, but I'd like to address the salary issue for council members. I do not want you to revisit what you're paying our city council members. I'm so afraid that you're going to decide it's time to pay them what they're worth instead of what you guys get, and that's just, that's just not right. We can't afford that right now. I don't know what we're, why we're lucky enough in this town to have had quality council members at the stipend that we're willing to pay, but some of us who are involved in the community know that you're probably only losing about 50, 60 grand a year, and I don't want you to revisit that right now, because I don't think we can afford to make it worthwhile for you to stay on council. So, thank you very much for the job that you do and for the wonderful wages that you do it for. Have a good night, and I'll let you know about the Lakers when I know more.
Thank you, Mr. Lemo. That's the end of our public comments tonight. So, we're looking at item seven. Okay, Mr. Mitnick will respond to a question that was raised.
A couple of things. Speaker asked for contact information about Native American studies done at the Lang Ranch Park site, so we'll have Jim Friedel, the general manager for CRPD. Get back to him with that. And there was reference made to a grand jury report from many years ago, and we'll make sure that individual is provided with a full copy of the report and the response that was provided, so he has the big picture. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Now, pardon me, item seven, City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar, Will of the Council, Ms. Bill De La Peña.
I would like to move the council, or the consent item, the consent calendar, with the exception of item C.
Comments?
Mayor, we do have a speaker for the consent calendar.
Oh, my apologies. We won't go any further then after the comment here. Ms. Bill De La Peña, you want to hold on? Okay. Mr. Gilmer?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Jim Gilmer, president of Cybersurban Network. I've been involved with the Royal Oaks Drive Green Belt Project since its inception. I want to thank now city manager Scott Mitnick for foresight and many of the city staff. Having been involved with many of the workers there, as well as residents, as well as city staff, we've seen six years of progress this year, being probably the culmination of much success in that area, with a huge credit to our staff, Carlos Loiza, and the team that works with law enforcement there. And most importantly, I know that the laborers, even in these difficult times, from the wages that they earn, local vendors can certainly use purchasing power of residents in the city, and many of them live here. So, when they go to the local stores, whether it's the liquor store, the jewelry store, or other stores within the area, they do spend their resources. And in these times, I would hope that the city would continue to be supportive of the project. In times where homeowners, residents are looking to save a little bit of money here and there on work and efforts, we're glad to be a part. We save the city money in numerous ways, and more importantly, we work alongside law enforcement as well. So, I'm here to answer any questions. We expect to have an outstanding another year and continue to work with local residents for the benefit of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmer, and I really appreciate the efforts you've put into the job since you've been over there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Bill De La Peña.
I move the consent calendar with the exception of item 7C.
Okay. You want to... Thank you. All in favor?
Motion carries 5-0.
Ms. Bill.
And 7C does deal with the day labor site. I do appreciate that you did come out here tonight. I have previously, pretty consistently voted against the expenditure, and I would have preferred to see a reduction in the costs, especially when I see that the city pays about $250 per day, $21 per hour, for what is considered really a part-time position. So, it's $100,000 a year for part-time. I know it's every day. I have other issues with this particular site other than the money, and that is why I cannot support this particular expenditure. So, thank you very much, and I know that you are trying to help the community, but there is simply a difference in philosophy. Thank you. And that would be a no vote on item 7C, so if somebody else could move that.
Sure. Motion to approve, Mr. Gillette. Bill 7C. Thank you. Comments, none? Please vote.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you very much. And with the clerk, please call 8A, open the public hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8A, Landscape and Lighting Assessment District 79-2, the annual levy and annexations for fiscal year 2009, 2010. Speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you very much. Mr. Spurgeon, you doing the staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. With me at the dais tonight is...
With me at the dais tonight is Nancy Arietta, our associate analyst, and Dan Lazlo, a senior engineer, both in our Public Works Department. I wanted to just introduce you to them, or them to you, sorry, because they really do a great job of managing this district. It is in, really in very good financial condition, and it's their hard work that puts together the engineers' report and the budgets each year. This is our annual public hearing for setting assessments for landscape and lighting districts for the coming fiscal year. In nineteen ninety-eight, these districts were re-engineered into a number of benefit zones. The maps that you see across the council chamber and behind me show the various colors that represent separate benefit zones that were put together to better track actual maintenance costs for landscape improvements in those areas that specifically benefit residents in those areas, so that people that are benefiting from more, more landscape in, in the public places around their developments, if those costs are higher, then they would be paying more than, than other residents in other areas that maybe don't have as, as many improvements that don't cost as much to maintain. Also, in nineteen ninety-eight, the voters approved an annual inflation rate, that being the greater of three percent or the CPI. This year, we're recommending that the maximum assessment rates in both districts be increased by three percent, as that was higher than, than the current CPI, of course, as you might imagine. The maximum rates for landscaping vary depending on which benefit zone you're in, from thirty-five dollars to about three hundred and fifty dollars per year, per parcel. And for street lighting citywide, it is twelve dollars per year, per parcel. About eighty percent of the city does pay street lighting assessments, and just a little over forty percent pay for landscape assessments. The actual assessments that we are proposing be set for the coming fiscal year for the landscape portion of the district. Our recommendation is that they not be increased, that these would be held as the same as last year, which I believe is about, this is about the third year that we're able to maintain those assessments at, at a flat rate. This is due to, I think, a lot of good work by staff in keeping costs down, as well as having a very healthy fund balance that we're able to balance those assessments, although our revenues from sources such as Ad Valorem have, have actually been above our estimates over the last few years. In the streetlight portion, we're recommending that just a little under two dollar increase per year, per parcel, to eleven dollars. So that's the, the recommendation for streetlight assessments. Of course, our budgets are affected by electrical costs that, that do go up, especially on the streetlight side, and that's why we are recommending primarily the increase there. Water costs are also a big, a big item, and as our water costs increase in the future, we may need to address those in future years. There are fund balances in both the districts, and we're, we do have capital projects in the capital budget to improve landscaping citywide, primarily to look at cost savings in the long run in terms of lower maintenance and water use. And for street lighting, we do have about fifty intersections where we need to add streetlights. We'll be using, again, the fund balances to, to install those. There are two annexations for this year's proceedings. These are projects that developed over the last year or so. There are two single-family parcels on Lynn Road just west of Ven Two, and then there's a new eighty-two unit tract on Ven Two, Park Road at Newbury Road. And these would be, these are, would be balloted. Ballots were sent out to those property owners. We have received some ballots prior to the meeting. Those will need to excuse ourselves and, and count, open those ballots, count them, and then we'll come back later in the meeting and give you the results of the ballots, as well as recommendations for resolutions to be adopted. And with that, I would, you would be addressing staff recommendations one and two at this time, and we'll come back again later, as I mentioned, for the remainder of the recommendations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spurgeon. Nice report. Questions of staff? Okay. I don't see any speakers to the, to the issue. I assume there's no ballots coming from the audience. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And after, after we close the public hearing, of course, no further ballots will be accepted. Public hearing closed. Deputy, deputy city clerk will file a final tabulation of the ballots in the city clerk department. While the ballots are being tabulated, we'll continue on with the agenda items and return to this item when tabulation is complete. Thank you.
Do we need a motion on items one and two?
Uh, Madam City Attorney, do we? That's not in my script.
That's because you rely on staff.
Oh. Are we?
I think we need a motion to approve the public hearing, don't we?
I, yes, let's do it. You have it?
Yeah, I'll move recommendation one and two.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fox. That's twice you've bailed me out. And with clerk, please call eight B.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item eight B, annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges, the property tax rule, and we have no speakers for this item.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Adams? You're doing staff report?
Actually, Mrs. Scott will be doing it.
Ms. Scott, you're doing for that, staff report. Good evening.
Good evening. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service charges by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's annual property tax bill. Wastewater account holders are notified via billing reminder notices, and letters are sent annually beginning in March notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid. Leans are placed on the parcel for amounts that are one hundred and twenty days past due in April of each year, and subsequent letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city intends to attach the past due amount to the property tax rolls. To put this in context, when finance start, when finance started the process in March of this year, we identified six hundred and ninety-four wastewater accounts with delinquent amounts totaling one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Over the past few months, customers have responded to the notices and have paid. In April, four hundred and ten leans were placed totaling approximately eighty-four thousand dollars. Customers continue to pay, bringing the amount subject to attachment today to two hundred and sixty-five accounts totaling approximately sixty thousand dollars. This is a very small number of accounts to be attached compared to the thirty-seven thousand total connections. It's about point seven percent or less than one percent. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution and approve the list of names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the county tax collector for inclusion on the property tax bills. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Questions of staff? Ms. Bill?
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Scott.
Good evening.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I have a question simply because in the last few weeks, I have received emails from one party in Thousand Oaks complaining about a reconnection of water. I don't know who the property owner is, whether it is a senior citizen, disabled or not, on a fixed income, and, but this particular property owner cannot afford, for whatever reason, or refuses to pay the sixty-dollar reconnection fee. Do we have any program in place for seniors, low-income seniors, or disabled seniors who will occasionally perhaps miss a payment? I mean, we don't know what their health situation is, whether it's dementia, Alzheimer's, or just simply something else, to help them to avoid being disconnected altogether?
Well, I believe that the, the finance department works very, very closely with our customers to try to work with them and bring them into compliance before we ever shut off their water. The way it works for low-income seniors, we do have a program called the Housing Assistance Program for Seniors. I believe council heard a, I guess, we did a, a staff report about a month ago, increasing the, the income check that we do to, to be able to determine who, who are low-income and, and give them a small stipend to help them offset their living expenses. In addition to that, we work really closely with the customers, and we refer them to places like Under One Roof, and we extend their payments if we need to. This particular instance, it was a customer who is consistently late and got caught up in a situation where the water was shut off. And when water is shut off, there's a thirty-dollar charge for the shut-off and a thirty-dollar charge for reconnecting the service, and that's disclosed on their bill. And subsequently, that customer has paid the connect and disconnect charge, so I, I believe that situation is resolved.
It has been resolved then, Mrs. Hong? Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. And thank you for mentioning the programs because I think that with having the media here tonight, perhaps we can get the word out, or also on the city's website, I'm sure has information already, but perhaps let the low-income families or seniors know that there is help, especially in these difficult economic times. If we could just add a little bit more awareness to that, I, I would appreciate it, and perhaps Mr. Mittnick will see to that. Thanks.
Comments? Okay, there's no public speakers. Let's close, close the public hearing and entertain a motion. In that case, I move recommendation one and two. Comments to the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
And with the clerk, please open nine A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item nine A. This is a city council redevelopment agency public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year two thousand nine, ten, and fiscal year two thousand ten, eleven, city and redevelopment agency operating and capital improvement program budgets, and we have no speakers for this item.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I will be presenting the proposed fiscal year oh nine, ten, and the ten, eleven operating and CIP budgets for your approval. Here's tonight's agenda for the proposed budgets. After staff's presentation, we will be available for questions. Each department head is also here to answer specific questions related to their department's Here's a quick intro on the timeline. Above are some recent key dates in the budget process. The budget process actually started in November of two thousand eight, when staff brought to the city council the budget calendar. But the financial planning for the budget process started in November of two thousand seven. If you remember, it, when we adopted the last two-year budget, council gave direction to update the financial strategic plan. So really, this budget process has, actually did start in November two thousand seven as we updated our FS, our financial strategic plan in November of two thousand seven. Some key dates, as you recall, there was a capital budget study session on April the seventh. Capital budget was then reviewed by the Planning Commission on April twentieth. Operating budget study session occurred on May the fifth, and the Finance Audit Committee meeting was on May twentieth. And of course, tonight, June ninth, we're having the public hearing for the operating and capital budgets. In tonight's presentation, I want to emphasize three key points for this budget. Long-term financial planning has been critical. I did mention the financial strategic plan that we started in November of two thousand seven. I don't think we would be this successful with a balanced budget if we hadn't started that process back in November of two thousand seven. This budget is in full compliance with city council fiscal policies. The general fund for both fiscal years is structurally balanced. This is critical. If you recall, at the May fifth operating budget study session, we had a one million dollar gap per year. After staff met with the Finance Audit Committee and the direction was given to get a general fund budget that was balanced, staff worked diligently to incorporate suggestions from the city council at the study session and the committee in order to present a balanced budget tonight. Also, this budget has thirty-four unfunded positions, which will and has had an impact on service delivery. There are future challenges, which I will cover later, and it was also covered in the report. And then finally, and what was important in the last two years, is the budget monitoring that will occur over the next two years. Watching our revenue streams decline and maintaining information on that is going to be critical over this two-year period. The citywide summary, this includes all city funds. The summary represents citywide appropriations, which includes operating capital expenditures. The budget for the two years total is four hundred and forty-seven million dollars. This includes over a hundred and five thousand in capital projects, and the use of forty-eight and thirty-two million in, in reserves to cover those capital projects, which is within the guidelines of the city's reserve policy. Some key points, citywide revenues for the first year is one, one hundred and seventy-two million, in the second year it's a hundred and seventy-nine. Salary and benefits is fifty-one million in the first year and fifty-two million in the second. Citywide funded positions for, for fiscal year two thousand ten will be five hundred and seventy FTEs, and for the second year will be five hundred and sixty FTEs. This pie chart shows appropriations detailed by fund for fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Please note that the general fund is thirty-one percent of the total budget. As you can tell, this is a complex municipal corporation that provides a wide range of services, everything from wastewater to golf course. Again, detailed appropriations for, by fund for fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. General fund is thirty-three percent of the budget. The library fund is four percent at nine million, and the redevelopment agency is eleven percent at twenty-four point two million dollars. Business-type funds account for seventy-two point six million dollars or thirty-three percent. This includes water, wastewater, solid waste, transportation, theater, and the golf course. The table above shows the funded and unfunded positions for this two-year budget. It also provides the funded positions for this year and the funded positions that were for last fiscal year. Using oh seven and oh nine, oh eight as our basis, we had four hundred and eighty-three positions, city positions. This does not include public safety personnel. Last year, as you recall, city council froze eleven positions, and we took away funding for eleven positions. For the proposed oh nine, ten year, along with those eleven positions, we have thirteen more unfunded positions. And in the third or the second year of the two-year budget, we have a total of thirty-four unfunded positions. So we're going for, from four hundred and eighty-three funded down to four hundred and forty-nine. This is citywide and does not include police personnel. Let me briefly cover the CIP, or the Capital Improvement Program budget for the two-year budget. The CIP budget includes a five-year capital improvement plan. Staff relied on the initial financial strategic plan in completing the CIP budget. The total number of projects has decreased from the current two-year CIP budget, but has an increase in total project budget, mainly because we are anticipating grant funding. Providing the capital budget is in a separate document, allows for detailed information for each project in the next two fiscal years. Also, per city council direction, this will be the first year that project priorities will be included. This is a summary of the CIP categories. As you can tell, transportation and wastewater projects are the two largest categories, each with approximately twenty-four million dollars in projects over the next two years. Again, the total project budget for two years is a hundred and five million dollars. This pie chart shows the funding sources This pie chart shows the funding sources for CIP budget for fiscal year '09-2010. The largest funding source is the state and federal funding at 43% of the budget. Also worth noting is the amount of projects funded from the general fund. Both years show reductions in comparison to prior CIP budgets. For fiscal year 2010-2011, the total budget is $47.8 million. Again, state and federal funding is the largest funding source at 44%. Also, as mentioned in the staff report, use of development-related revenue for CIP has significantly declined, and in the second year, we are only proposing 1.6 million. Here's a list of some key capital projects that are planned over the next two years. These are of interest because they meet some of the council priorities, including the 101 Windy Interchange, the 101 23 interchange improvements, the Norwegian Grade Rehab, and one of interest is landscaping water conservation program that was reduced from $800,000 in the draft CIP budget down to $400,000 in the proposed. Let me briefly cover the operating budget. We, of course, went through the process of developing the 10-year financial strategic plan, which greatly added in the development of this budget. I'm focusing primarily on the general fund in my next few slides, and then I will talk about some other funds as well. The chief operating fund is the general fund, and with service or staffing reductions or staffing positions that have been unfunded, we will definitely have service impacts. Presenting this chart is the general fund summary of revenues and allocations or appropriations. As you can see, the total allocations are just over $71 million in each of the upcoming fiscal years. This table shows, next table shows, general fund revenues for the current two-year budget as well as the proposed two-year budget. What's important in this table is a $6 million increase from actual revenues in '07-08 that were received through last June compared to projected revenues for the next 12 months. That $6 million decrease is 8.5%, and that has been the reason for significant reductions in service delivery. All right. This chart shows appropriations by category through fiscal year '09-2010. As you can see, salary and benefits is the greatest cost at 44% of the budget, with police being the second at 35%. These two categories represent almost 80% of the general fund budget. This chart is for 2010-2011, thus showing that police and salary and benefits continue to be a large portion of the general fund budget. This chart shows allocations of the general fund by department for fiscal year '09-10, with police being the largest department and having expenditures equal to 37% of the budget, the general fund budget. Again, same chart, second year, police is 40% at $26.9 million. The second-largest department is Public Works at $12.4 million. Mentioned earlier and try to focus on the fact that the general fund budget is balanced. We'll talk about adjustments that staff and the committee recommend for the proposed budget, but I want to focus specifically on the use of reserves. Current revenues are at $66.1 million and current appropriations are at $71.1 million. That is proposing a use of reserves in the first year of $4.9 million. But as City Council is aware, City Council policy is to use reserves in one-time expenditures. One-time expenditures include capital projects, and so we list capital projects at 4.2 in the first year. The other is the retirement incentive and buyout. That $536,000 is the $20,000 incentive and then the accrued leaves of those employees that are retiring. And then the third, which we'll talk a little more about, is the recommendation from the Finance Audit Committee, which was an original recommendation from the Brainstorming Action Group to have a holiday closure or work furlough during the Christmas and New Year's holidays. With those three items as one-time or impacts to reserves, the general fund gap is zero and thus the structurally balanced general fund. This chart shows operating revenues and expenditures for 10 years. The first seven years are actuals, where the final three years, 2009, 2010, 2011, are projected. Staff at this point is projecting balanced or operating revenues to match operating expenditures for 2009. This budget, being balanced, also does the same thing for 2010-2011. The difference between the yellow dot on the 2010 and the red dot, which is revenues on 2010, is the two items of the retirement buyout and the holiday closure. We talked about the financial strategic plan at the presentation in January. Staff was projecting a $3.2 million gap if we had not made various adjustments. Since January, several things have occurred, and here I have listed them out. First, the city offered a retirement incentive, which 17 employees are retiring, thus funding for 17 positions will be frozen for the next two years. Unfunded positions in the general fund library fund. We do have a citywide reduction of 34, or reduction in funding for 34 positions, but the library and the general fund actually are being impacted by 37 FTEs not being funded out of the general fund or the library. This is a result of reallocation of some personnel to other funds. We've mentioned the workers' comp rate being zero, which has a $400,000 a year adjustment. Fixed asset replacement will be reduced. Contracting out street sweeping will result in a $600,000 annual increase. Increased solid waste franchise fee, which will be $550,000, and the frozen hit-and-run officer at $225,000. Talked a little about the general fund and the library positions. These are the various departments which have decreases in funded positions for this next two-year budget. In the first column, I'm showing the positions that were funded last year. And in the second column, showing funded positions which will be funded in the second year. And so for each department that had reductions, I'm showing changes accordingly. To sort of go to the four largest reductions, or at least finance, library, police, and public works, I want to talk a little about service levels. For finance, the impact has been felt both in building maintenance and janitorial. I think our building maintenance has been deferred in a lot of cases. Janitorial has been reduced. I think our service delivery in janitorial has been significantly decreased. Future impacts, because we are losing two positions or unfunding for two positions in the next two years, will be in information technology and in administration. For the library, library has, based on their reduction in funded positions, staffing will have a direct impact on customers with various support desks being closed during the day. Along with the staffing funding, the reduction in staff funding, the materials budget has been reduced by 20%. For police, it's only two positions, but the impacts are from the hit-and-run officer and the reduction of the 84-hour car to the 40-hour car. That is the two unfrozen positions or unfunded positions. The loss of the 84-hour car to 40 hours will impact patrol units, which will tend to focus on and maintain response times, making arrests, and writing reports. This will impact our community-oriented policing programs, which would suffer somewhat as the patrol people focus primarily on the core services and not the community support items. For Public Works, who's losing 12 positions, funding for 12 positions, there will be various impacts, everything from street sweeping to community programs to landscaping programs to maintenance related to medians, the suspension of sidewalk improvements, and slow response time to citizen responses. So if you see, that's over 30 positions listed there, and those will definitely have impacts on service delivery. Finance Audit Committee recommendations. On May 20th, staff met with the Finance Audit Committee to talk about items to reduce the gap from 1 million to zero. These are the recommendations of the committee in order to achieve a balanced budget. First of all, for law enforcement, based on council comments at the study session, Finance Audit Committee recommends a reduction of the Rover car from 84 hours to 40 hours. This would be a $300,000 savings. They also recommended a one-time use of the liability fund use of reserves, which will save the city $250,000 a year. I talked briefly about the holiday closure. Based on the employee group that came up with the recommendation and the comments from council at the last council meeting on the budget, they're recommending the implementation of a four-day holiday closure from Christmas to New Year's. The estimated savings is well above, or the impact on salaries is above the $200,000, but we prorated this based on certain employees would be taking vacation during that time anyway. They also recommended suspending the open space transfer at $100,000 per year. This is the transfer from the general fund to the open space fund based on if the city has reserves or income from the operations for that year. And then they're also recommending to suspend the sports facility grants in both years at $100,000 in each year. One of the items I included in the staff report was a listing of grants that were given to various organizations for the sports and the sports facility grants over the last three years. And so those are the potential impacts to those entities. Let me briefly cover the library fund and some other funds, and then I'm going to close with the challenges and then the summary. To quickly highlight, the library fund is still anticipating the county participation revenue. No final determination by the county has been made yet to eliminate the funding to the city. Since the revenue source was included in the budget, the inter-fund, the inter-library loan and the non-resident fee will be eliminated. Just to note that in tonight's resolution, we are asking for those fees to be zero or to be eliminated starting July 1st. Just to note, the general fund subsidizes the library between 2.5 in the first year and 2 million in the second year, while total program costs are expected to be 9.5 and 9 million in the second year. Other governmental funds, stormwater, $125,000, $150,000 subsidy from the general fund. That fund is, that program area is not, does not include new costs related to implementing the new permit. These costs, based on staff's analysis, will be brought forward to City Council at a later date. For street improvement funds, this is something that came up recently in last few days. The budget does include anticipation of the Prop 42 funds, which comes from sales tax gasoline from the state as well as TDA funding. Staff has recently learned that these funds could be impacted. The current budget for street maintenance is $4 million per year. If both of those are lost, specifically Prop 42 would be postponed and would be alone, TDA funds could be eliminated. The result is a possible 75% reduction in funding for street maintenance programs. This is pretty significant and would increase the overlay schedule from where it currently is out to 75 to 100 years, which is not acceptable based on our current standards. As far as redevelopment agency, for fiscal year 2009-2010, $25.5 million; in the second year, $26 million budget. Enterprise funds, water, wastewater, currently preparing financial plans, water rate increases are included in this budget, in the proposed budget. And for the theater fund, there is a use of reserves. For the theater fund, as you recall, this theater fund does not rely on general fund support, and thus, staff is recommending use of reserves. The theater fund has reserves sufficient to cover this drawdown. There were no increases in rental rates, and the cultural arts review is pending. I highlighted the challenges that we will see over the next two, probably over the next five years. Some of them are more immediate, some of them are more long-term. I earlier talked about service level impacts with the reduction in funding for positions. 34 positions will be felt, and I think I highlighted those impacts earlier. The state of California, as we know that they have their own budget difficulties. Right now, they have a proposal to borrow $2 billion from cities and locals. The city's impact could be 2.4 million. Staff, if that does occur, would anticipate using reserves to loan that money to the state with anticipation of full payment within three years. Library funding agreement, I barely, I mentioned this a little. The library budget does anticipate full funding. If that agreement is terminated and it has any impact on the funding for the library, staff will come back with recommendations. Citywide assessed valuation, talked a little about this last study session. The budget anticipates a 2% increase in our property tax revenue. This may not be at the point in which we made this assessment. This was conservative based on the information we received. The county is anticipating actually a decrease in property tax if this does occur for Thousand Oaks, because county is looking at it county-wide. If this does occur for the city of Thousand Oaks, staff will come back with ways of addressing that or reducing expenditures accordingly. I mentioned the permit, the stormwater permit. This budget does not include the additional costs related to the new permit. Once staff identifies those costs, we'll come back with costs for implementation. CalPERS retirement, as we know, the stock market has been down. The returns on retirement funds that are held with CalPERS have been impacted. Any increases, though, will not be anticipated until the third year or three years out, which is beyond this budget cycle. But I wanted to make sure that council is aware that retirement costs could increase between 4% and 5%. Next slide. Theater fund, again, no general fund support, but we are using reserves for this two-year budget. Future budgets could include general fund subsidies. Sales tax revenue, this budget anticipates a 7% decline in sales tax revenue for this next fiscal year. We monitor this revenue very closely. There could be additional declines. If there are, we will notify council accordingly. I talked a little about development-related revenue. We have seen a decline, so CIP projects have been impacted, and other operating expenditures also have been impacted. Water rates, this budget anticipates water rates, the cost of water going up 20%, and so costs have been increased. We do anticipate proposed rate increases for water. Citywide staffing, briefly mentioned this, 34 positions citywide. That is approximately 7% of the workforce, but specifically in the general fund and library fund, it's over 12%. I briefly talked about street paving. If either Prop A or Prop 42 money or TDA funding is eliminated, this will significantly impact our street maintenance programs. And police rates, we do anticipate a 3% and a 5% increase. If rates are less, that will benefit the city. If they're more, that will impact the city. There is some concerns with the retirement fund as well, and so I think the second-year 5% is conservative, but it may not be enough, so we'll find out. Summary, this was not a status quo budget. A lot of work went into it, a lot of time. We've really spent the last two years preparing for this proposed budget. It is fiscally responsible. I think we've made the reductions where appropriate to address the $6 million decline in revenue. It does maintain critical services. It, we hope, it's going to achieve City Council's priorities that were identified at the first quarter. Resources were allocated based on City Council's priorities. And then it was a team effort. I think this budget is a result of the vision and the leadership of the City Council and all the hard work of every employee in the city. A lot of great ideas were identified by the bag or the Brainstorming Action Group or the employees. I think the departments worked extremely hard to get a balanced budget, and I'm extremely grateful for working with such a great, great bunch of people. I think that will conclude my presentation. Staff's recommendation is adopt the two resolutions, as I noted earlier. The citywide resolution does have an amendment that The citywide resolution does have an amendment that was in your green packet that is eliminating the fees for both the inner loan, the inner library loan fee and the, and the non-resident fee. And staff's available for questions.
John, congratulations, and just a job really well done by you and your staff. This wasn't the easiest thing in the world to put together, considering the times. So, thank you very much. Questions of staff? Mrs. Irwin.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Adams, great job, you and your staff, and all the staff, for all the sacrifices they're making to make sure that we have a balanced budget. I think we're in much better shape than a lot of cities with this. I just had two quick questions. The first is for the holiday closure. You're justifying paying for that out of reserves because that's considered a one- or two-year event?
What, what the ultimate impact of having the closure is, and it's, tell me if I get too much into accounting, but when employees accrue vacation or leaves, that is a reserve, that is an impact or a liability that has impacts on reserves. By having employees use their leaves, our liability for our accrued leaves will decline, and thus the impact would be the same as not having the expenditure at all. So, the simple question is yes. The reason why, it's not having a direct impact on the expenditures, but it's having a direct impact on our use of reserves.
Thank you for that. And then, I thought in the report that you just gave, you said you're looking at a PERS increase of 4% or 5%. And then in the report, I see between 15% and 45%.
Yeah, I should clarify that. The 4% or 5% is how much of payroll, 4% or 5% of payroll. So, right now, our PERS rate, the employer's share, is 12%. The potential is it could go up to 16, could go up 4% to 5%, which would be 16% or 17%. And thus, the 25% in the report, because for...
And the report says between 15% and 45%?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's correct.
I hopefully, that, I'm sorry, it's actually 4% to 5% of payroll, which could have an impact between 15% and 40% of our retirement costs.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Who's Bill's opinion?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Adams. Thank you for a very thorough report. Must not have been easy to come up with a balanced budget. In terms of the percentages that were just presented for the retirement cost, can you put a dollar figure on that?
Retirement costs? You mean what are total costs for...
When you say there might be, when you add the payroll and when you say it could be as high as 45%, what, how much money would we be talking about?
You know, it's interesting, because I don't have that number in front of me. Give us a second, we'll calculate it.
Thank you. And while that is being done, should I just wait before I ask my next question?
Ask your next question.
The next question deals with the street sweeping and savings of up to $600,000. Mr. Watkins? Oh, okay. I thought perhaps you would just walk over there to answer, but I thought that was the purpose of your coming up here. I don't know whether you are able to answer the question.
Actually bringing your calculator to our finance director.
Oh, I see.
I'm happy to answer. This is not a good sign.
Street sweeping and the savings of up to $600,000 per year. And does that include, that does not, as I understand it, that cost is based on four positions being moved or transferred to a different department?
What we're showing in here, and what will come before the council, I think at their next meeting, is a transfer of the responsibility for street sweeping to our solid waste franchises. And so the two franchise holders for solid waste would accept the obligation for street sweeping because the very nature of their work, when they're emptying the trash, contributes to the street sweeping. And so it would become an obligation for those two trash franchises. And so the cost that we would eliminate would be the cost for those positions and then the operation of the sweepers themselves. So, the cost of the equipment, fuel, all the types of things that go along with it. That will be proposed to council and then would go into effect January 1st of 2010. So, there'll be about a six-month phase-in for that. So, that's why, so it actually shows half the cost the first year, and then in the second year, the budget shows the full cost.
And that cost or savings does not include the salaried positions?
It does. It includes the salaried positions plus, I'm sorry, and in addition to that, includes the savings for equipment and fuel and all that, but it does include the salaries, yes.
Okay. What I had a hard time understanding is those positions are not being, the employees are not being laid off. They're being transferred to a different department to fill vacant positions. So, in essence, we are just moving. I don't see how we can say that we're saving $600,000 when in fact the cost of the labor is just being moved to a different department.
We have, and Mr. Adams can weigh in on this, too. We have positions in this budget that are shown as frozen or unfunded. We also have current positions within the city that are vacant, but that we intend to fill. So, these employees would end up in positions that are vacant, but that we need to fill, and then the positions that they held would be eliminated.
Correct. Correct. I, for...
Does that make sense or not?
I think Mr. Watkins did a good...
I mean, I understand it, but it doesn't make financial sense to me.
Okay. Let, yeah. Let me try my best. When Mark, when we say other departments, it's not other departments. At the service center, there are various critical areas: street maintenance, landscaping, water, wastewater, field workers. And so those street sweeper, the, those positions are in a classification that would be going to one of those other areas: water, which has their own funding source, wastewater, landscaping, and street maintenance. And so when you have, when you have a program that you're eliminating or pushing off to the contractor, those people would go into positions that we need those programs to continue. And so, right now, we have more vacancies than we currently are preparing or proposing to be unfunded. So, right now, we have approximately 40 vacancies. Several of those will be funded, are funded and will be filled. Thirty-four are unfunded and will not be filled. Hope I did a better job in doing that.
No, I do understand it. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Are these vacancies part of the cost saving that is included in the overall budget? Or did we already provide these salaries and benefits for those vacancies that we are filling?
Well, currently, the vacancies are in this, the savings are in this, are in this current fiscal year. The city is anticipating funding for the current vacancies that are planning, we have funding for vacancies that are currently existing for next year that are approved as funded positions, and those are identified in the budget as far as all the positions per department.
Can you tell me how many positions those are?
Approximately six. I mean, a good example, a good example is in the finance department. Right now, we have the deputy finance director, based on me being interim, we have a position that is currently funded in next-to-year budget, but is currently not, we have a position that's not being filled. That is an example where we have some people, some positions that are currently vacant, but funded and are funded in next-to-budget, next-to-year budget. That savings, based on not having that person right now, is occurring in this fiscal year. But once the budget is adopted and the recruitment process starts, the position would be filled. That would be an example.
Okay, thank you. And where are we with the benchmarking in terms of the number of employees compared to other cities of similar size to, and services to Thousand Oaks?
Maybe I can answer that, because, well, we talked a little bit about it. That's something that we wanted to bring in the final budget when it comes, you know, you guys are adopting it tonight, and then the finance department goes back and wraps up the final budget. And it's something we're going to try to incorporate in that one or bring something back to council in the fall.
Okay.
Because right now, they're, you know, they've been hard at work at the budget, and that was their first priority.
Sure. That is completely understandable. The, as was mentioned tonight, police and salary benefits make up for the largest cost of the whole budget. And we're definitely not looking at layoffs. That's definitely not something we want to do. So, you're mentioning the furloughs, four days. Is that something, is four days the number that, how did you arrive at the four days?
Maybe I could speak to that, because Connie Hickman and I were pretty much working on that together. The goal was to look at a period of time when the city finds itself where a lot of people want to take the time off. So, we arrived at the week after the, that last week in December. It's four days, because that's, the holidays just happened to follow that way. And that's how we arrived at that time. We felt it was most efficient for us. It's a time that's probably the slowest around the city, and that would be most advantageous to take that time off. So, but it also encouraged, you know, all of us to be gone and have the city hall closed and save on utilities and everything like that. So, that, this answers your question. We're kind of trying to look at a period of time when the city hall is probably at least utilized.
I still have a few more questions, so please bear with me. Do you have the answer to my first question regarding the amount?
Yes, and let me explain how we, how at least I calculate to give you a ballpark. In the budget, on the first page, we provide a citywide summary. And underestimated requirements, salaries, citywide, and remember, this is not just the general fund, this is all funds. We talked about the $200 million budget per year. Salaries are at 35.7 million. Currently, the employer rate from PERS is 12%. If that increased to 16% as an example, a 4% difference, it's 4%, which is $1.4 million. So, it talked about this large range, which could be 4%, 5%, 6%. It could be anywhere from 1.2 up to $1.8 million a year, citywide, for all positions, all funds.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. No doubt. I would like to get into the capital improvement budget a little bit. I see that some of the expenditures for some of the, what I deem to be cosmetic improvements for the theater are being delayed now, after all, being moved to the, to what year now?
The ones that you're, the specific one relate to the turnaround, I think is the one...
No, the Capley Theater lobby upgrade and things like that, more of the cosmetic kind. I guess the turnaround would be too, but I think that's been put on hold for sure.
Yeah, the, well, yes, the theater lobby upgrade is being, well, it's actually in the second year, 70,000. If you look on page 152, it talks about the project. And this isn't what we would necessarily call an aesthetic, everything from, you know, repainting, just doing maintenance to maintain a facility. I mean, when you, when you have a $100 million facility, you have a theater like this, those are projects that you want to do to maintain it and protect the asset. So, you know, there were other projects in prior years related to the turnaround, some other stuff, that the finance or the capital facilities committee recommend to eliminate in this budget, and they are not there. They're not being postponed, they're not in the budget. And we've talked about those, I think we talked about during the study session, plus we talked about them in January as a recommendation to postpone those projects. There was two of them, I think, the parking structure and the turnaround.
Are there any other projects that are being delayed as a result of this, of balancing the budget?
No, because as you know, capital projects are funded from reserves. I will say that we're not delaying them because of the necessarily budget. I think at this point, the capital projects that are being funded from the general fund, and I think I mentioned it briefly in the presentation, is 3 million, and I think two in the second year. Significant reductions of prior years. I think that staff doesn't want to use reserves that are identified for capital projects at this point, specifically because we're waiting for maybe what the state might do. And if we have to fund what the state takes away or borrows, we would be funding this from reserves for capital projects.
I'd like to just weigh in on the question about the theaters enterprise fund, and we've talked about this before with council. As a reminder, this is a business enterprise fund, and this, the city council and the city organization, Tom Mitzi and his crew, have been criticized by the Alliance for the Arts and the Board of Governors and other patrons of the theaters for delaying upgrades to the seats and the carpet and other stuff over the years. So, like right now, as we're talking, Julio Iglesias, I hope I pronounced that correctly, is performing, Iglesias is performing next door, and people are paying, I don't know, 70, 80, 90 dollars a ticket. So, we have an obligation to make sure that the seats are in good shape, the carpet looks good, and the inside of the theaters look good. So, it's a business enterprise, and that's a little bit different. So, I always like to remind council of that. Sorry for the mispronunciation.
I'm sure he'll forgive you. Thank you. Yeah, I was just looking at the five-year summary list, and some of these costs are not in the '09 or '10 budget, but in the 11, 12. And originally, that was, I don't think that was the original plan, correct? Some of those improvements were meant to be done a little sooner.
You are correct. I believe, I don't have the original draft, but I do think that staff, specifically theater staff, just based on use of reserves, is postponing those into the second year. As I noted earlier, the theaters fund is using reserves, and some of those reserves are for capital projects, which are identified here. So, we're trying to balance out the use of reserves in the theaters funds in year one and year two. So, you are, I, now that you're mentioning, I think they did postpone a few, and that's one of them, I think, that they pushed off one year.
I always like to say how I do appreciate the work and the professionalism of the city staff, and that's all 600-plus employees, which includes part-time employees. But I also have to ask the question, and we've brought it up before, that in this particular budget, we do have salary increases totaling approximately 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars.
It's actually just a little over a million dollars.
Okay. Then, just over a million dollars.
Well...
Now, with these other challenges that we are facing, undoubtedly, and will be facing, we don't want to lay off any, anyone. I mean, I personally don't want to lay off anyone, and I'm sure I speak for the entire council, we don't want to do that. Would it not be prudent to take steps now in order to avoid something in the future that could really come down and hit us very hard?
Let me let the assistant city manager speak a little to that.
Clearly, any change in our agreements with the unions has to be negotiated, and that's one of the things that we've started to address with them. We've brought to them our budget, the challenges we have going forward, what it's going to look like next year, just like John brought up, all of the challenges we're going to be facing this year that we're going to have to address. And depending on what comes forward and what happens with all those, and what kind of challenges we face then for 2010, 11, the unions are prepared to work with us to come up with some solutions. And I totally agree with you, and I think they're prepared to, to look at that. But 2009, 10, as we're presenting it to tonight, is balanced. The second year, depending on what happens during the next six months with all the challenges we're presenting, will, you know, have us come back to the unions then and come up with some solutions there. But I totally agree with you, we have to be open to that, and the unions have shared that they are.
And by the way, I should mention, I believe increases for city council salaries are also included in this, and I'd be, you know, more than happy to take a pay cut.
Take note of that, please.
Yes, I will. In fact, that is my suggestion tonight, 10% pay cut, minimum. My salary, you can reduce that by at least 10%.
Are you finished?
No, not finished yet. I would imagine that the city employees would prefer to keep their jobs rather than, if they had to choose between a layoff and a salary freeze.
Okay.
That would be my, my guess. would be my guess.
We need to be careful that we don't have labor negotiations from the dais, so...the questions...
Okay, no, I don't mean to negotiate anything, but I do have serious concerns, especially with the retirement costs, which will undoubtedly increase as well, that perhaps...I don't want to forecast anything, but I don't want to find myself in a position a year and a half from now or so that I will have to look at layoffs. And I'm trying to avoid that. And when I see that we are issuing salary increases of over a million dollars, what good is it if in a year or two from now, we will have to lay off employees? That is what I'm looking at, and that's what I'm very concerned about. So, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gillette, Ms. Irwin?
I just had a...I guess I don't see the salary increases. When I look at page six, I see $200,000 difference. If with all the positions being frozen under salaries and benefits, that's about $250,000.
Okay, I like to comment a little bit here.
I was first...I just wanted to see if Mr. Adams could...
When you refer to page six, you're talking in the budget?
No, I'm talking about in the presentation.
Okay. Well, let me clarify. I think both in...yeah, in the citywide summary on the presentation I did, I showed salary and benefits at 51.7 and in the second year, 51.9, which is only 200,000, a little over a $200,000 increase. The reason for that is in the first year, the retirement incentives and buyouts are included in that, which is the 500, which is actually more like a mil...it's higher than the 500,000 that I stayed because I was really only focusing on the general fund. But even if you take a look at page one on the budget summary, those increases are not that because, as you mentioned, we have unfunded positions. And so, the result that is on slide six is the fact that we do show 10 unfunded positions from the first year to the second year. So, you are correct. Even though we are giving salary increases, and that is in compliance with the MOUs and is in both fiscal years, we have less funded positions. Employees are covering and making up for that. And I think that's why, at this point, we're recommending salary increases. We do have unfunded positions, and salary and benefits are being maintained at the same levels in both fiscal years.
Thank you, Gillette. Oh.
No, you missed it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Gillette.
Again, congratulations and to you and all of your staff and everyone, everyone, the city staff that's worked so hard to put this together.
And there's a lot of them.
Pardon?
And there's a lot of them.
I understand that. It doesn't happen quickly. A couple of...just fairly quick questions. And what is our current cost, contract cost with Los Angeles County for animal control?
It is approximate...well, let me rephrase it. In this current budget, I think that we have it at 135,000. In the proposed budget, we're anticipating increases of, I believe, up to 165 and 180 because of the increased demand and then their increase in costs. So, in the proposed budget, the first year, I believe it's 165, and in the second year, I believe it's 180.
Okay, well, the question of concern is that, like all jurisdictions, Los Angeles County is experiencing the same difficulties that other counties are. As service adjustments are made to their major programs, I'm always concerned about their ability to satisfy contract demands, and especially in the more...well, in Los Angeles County, more remote areas of southwestern Los Angeles County and southeastern Ventura County, us specifically.
Understood.
That was the reason for that. And I...our alternative is something that I don't really think is acceptable to us. So, okay. What is currently our per capita cost for library...for our library costs? What do we...can we calculate that, that we spend X number of dollars per citizen to maintain our library system?
Yes, we'll calculate 128,000 into 9.5 million.
The figure I'm looking for is...
It's just under 80 dollars.
About 80 for a population base of...you're using population of 127?
128.
128. So, it's about 80 dollars per person.
Yes.
Okay. If the...if this situation with the library fee does not work out in a manner that we hope that it will, how many residents in the immediate unincorporated area currently are covered by the...by that 180, 190,000? What's the population number?
The population of that area is about...of the unincorporated areas is about a little under 10,000. I'd say it's about 8,000, 800.
Okay. What's that figure times 80 dollars? Okay, so if the county...if this doesn't work out right, and we lose the 180,000, and we impose on other residents using the same charge that we charge our residents, we could see almost a $400,000 increase in revenue. In loose numbers?
That's how it would calculate. What we've found over the years is that the number of people who actually pay the non-resident fee decreases considerably. When we have...when we initiated the fee, we had 140,000 active borrowers. The population of the city was 100,000. And you would think that then 40,000 people would pay the fee, and we would get that amount. Actually, it turned out that only about 5,000 were issued cards, and only 2,500 of those were paying. Card members, cardholders, the remainder were given exemptions because they were students, business owners, that kind of thing. So, it's hard to make a direct correlation. In theory, you're correct.
Okay. I'll go with the theory. I'm just...because the numbers that we're working on to try and maintain services for the residents of the city, it seems to me that everything's on the table. And with that...with that thought in mind, I noticed on page 80 of the Council Packet Report, Item 5, the Community Prosecution Program, is referenced again. And I thought that was, from our perspective, was off the table.
I could address that. We have...the funding is in the budget, but as we've indicated to council, as well as the district attorney, we're going to hold off and wait and see what happens with various items such as the library agreement, the state budget, the closure of the East County Jail, and there might be others. And then, once those issues are resolved, then we come back to council with the continuation of the contract for the next two years. And so, to continue on month to month.
Well, okay, that's a $121,000 annual fee. And I don't see how it can be referenced when we've got a $6 million issue floating around with fire service, and it's not mentioned either in slide 30 or 31 or on page 80 or 81. So, when we're talking real money, $6 million a year more for our contract...contract fire department, I think that in the challenge area, that's certainly one, as we continue to deal with the difficulties of this financial situation we find ourselves in, that should be listed. And we shouldn't be afraid to talk about it. We should be talking about it. If we're going to talk about 121,000, I mean, I'm more concerned when the sheriff raised the issue about closing the East County Jail again. And we're talking about police services' hour reduction in a patrol car. And yet, the closing of the East County Jail means literally hundreds of hours of off-street police time transporting to a central jail because the county has no...would have no services in this end of the county. So, it's some of those big number issues, especially in the area of public safety, that I just want to make sure that we're all...we all remain very aware of as we continue to look at the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I just have a few brief questions. On page 76 of the staff report, it talks about the...this is referenced to the capital budget, that many of the appropriations and funding sources are from grant funds. I'm just curious, is there a contingency plan or is there any jeopardy of us losing those grant monies with what's going on everywhere?
Some of it...I mean, a lot of it is from federal as far as our transportation-related. A good example would be the 10123 freeway. As we sort of mentioned, you know, if some of the projects don't receive grant funding, those projects will more likely be delayed. The projects that are identified are on our list, and we're working with our federal lobbyists and to get funding for those projects. So, you know, well, if funding does not come for some of the major projects, staff will return back with other options for funding, whether it's use of other street-related funds or a general fund.
All right. And then, just for clarification, on the items Ms. DeLaPena brought up, on slide 25 of the presentation for staff, this deals with general fund positions?
Correct.
When we have...of the total 30 positions, I think you referenced?
34 unfunded, citywide. This general fund and the library fund are seeing an impact of 37 unfunded positions. And one of the things I did not clarify for Ms. DeLaPena is the fact that some of the positions in the general fund and library fund are being allocated to other funds, funded from other funding sources.
The impression, and I understand the explanation, the impression is, for example, in the clerk's office, in '07, '08, nine positions, '10, '11, eight positions, change minus one. The impression is they're actually losing a funded position. Is that correct?
Yes, they are losing a funded position.
Okay. But is that a real body, or is that just an accounting exercise? Because what I heard was, for the most part, an accounting exercise, other than the police services, which those are real bodies, I think. I know the 40-hour car is a real body. Now, the hit-and-run officer, I'll get to that in a second. But how many, if any, of these positions are actual living bodies?
I'm not sure if I should give the city clerk as an example.
Well, why don't we...why don't we use the city clerk? Because I'm just going to go right down the line.
Right. Let me use the city manager as a better example because I...just because I think it is easier to explain. City manager has two less funded positions. One position was transferred or has moved to finance. We had a vacancy at the customer service area.
I get that. I get that. My point is, is that, and I'm not trying to be tricky here, but I think in terms of budget and in terms of salaries and the issues that we're talking about, there's really nobody leaving the payroll here, is there?
There are no layoffs. There are no...there are no people that are...
Or nobody leaving city service through the retirement, and we're cutting that position.
There are...
Okay, then that's a salary savings. That's a salary savings. How many of those are in the 34 positions?
17.
17.
Plus, there are other retirements that have occurred, whether it was prior to the incentive or that did not qualify for the incentive.
Okay. And I'm looking more at Ms. Hong here. Is that in...you know, I just think we need to paint a clearer picture for council where it's not so convoluted about, well, we're losing some of the city manager's office, but they're really going to finance because finance was down three people. If we put somebody in finance, they're really only down two people, but they're not funded.
Maybe the confusion comes from the fact that the pressure has been on the general fund because of the declining revenue. So, our intent was, when there was vacancies in other departments that are funded by, other than the general fund, to try to move those positions over there. So, when you're seeing these different numbers floating around, it seems bigger in the general fund because we've offloaded some of those positions off out of the general fund into another area and to the fund...
Right. And I'm sure...I'm not really questioning staff's methodology for managing staff and maximizing salary savings. What I am suggesting, though, is there is a...there is a pretty easy, clear way for this to be referenced, and I don't think that we quite hit that balance this time.
And the problem probably is because we've never had to...we've always gone the other direction where we're adding positions. But now, we're going the other direction where we're deleting positions or not funding them. And we have to decide after this point in time whether or not we're going to continue not fund them or we're going to cut them entirely. And that goes to a whole nother discussion with the unions and everything. So, right now, we're not sure where we're going to go with them. So, we've left them as unfunded, but the positions are still in the budget. You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
If I can just say...
Unfunded.
If I can say one comment, I think it goes back to the unfunded. These positions have been filled in the past two years or are currently filled that will be retiring. So, they were bodies. People were in those positions. They either left or they're retiring.
And we're not filling them.
They're unfunded, so...
No, that's not what I said.
This is the point, we're not filling them.
Not filling them. Okay, but they're still on the payroll.
They're not on the payroll either.
Well, meaning we're not filling them, but there's...if, for example, if you chose, you could advertise and hire for that position?
Well, we probably couldn't because we don't have the money set aside for that.
Okay, and that's where I'm getting to.
We couldn't fill it because we don't have the money.
It's not funded, but there's...that position still remains as...okay, and for example, if three years from now, if we...if it's still unfunded and we have not filled the position, somebody's recommending the elimination of that position because we've gone for three years, we haven't used it. Why have it there?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And I get that. I'm just saying it needs to be...it needs to be more clear, I think, to the council.
What we're doing.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm certainly used to this. In Los Angeles, it's a very common...
And we've not done this before. I mean, like I said, we've never had...
That's why I'm very familiar with it. I don't think everybody else is, you know, following clearly what exactly we're doing with respect to positions, who's staying, who's leaving. Is this creating an actual...are we cutting the number of employees in the city, or are we just shuffling people around to fill vacancies that existed? And when people leave city service, i.e. retirement, does that position then go away? Okay? And then the salary and the retirement, everything with it. That's really true savings. So, that's the distinction. Now to the police issue. The hit-and-run car officer?
Yes.
Tell us about that.
Hit-and-run officer was frozen as part of the $4 million budget reductions last July.
Right.
That is currently being maintained as a frozen position for police in the proposed two-year budget. One of the items that is out there is a potential funding from federal funding to fund a portion of that hit-and-run officer. So, at this point, that position is continuing to be frozen. That was what was approved back in July of '08, yeah, 2008, to assist in the $4 million general fund.
Okay, I'm sure the committee assists, but maybe Chief Matson can clarify a little bit more. The...who took up the slack, so to speak, and who's doing the work that the hit-and-run officer was doing?
It was delegated to the other traffic officers in the traffic bureau.
Okay. Any decline, chief, in terms of number of arrests, prosecutions, reports, follow-ups?
No, just a decline in citations.
Okay.
Because they have a higher workload.
So, they're writing less tickets because they're doing more invest...
Investigations.
I got it. Okay. I'm just curious, is it dramatic decrease in citations or...
No.
Okay. All right, very good. And then, the 84 to 40-hour, is that in the budget as a recommendation?
Yes, going from 80... Um, yes, going from 84 to 40 hours.
It is. Okay, very good. Um, and I just, again, I wanna clarify, in terms of salary, um, we have a multi-year contract with our employees, what, and we're going into the third year?
2010, 11 is the third year. So we're in the second year, starting in 910.
Right. So that would be the, uh, 10, 11 would be the third year.
Yes.
So the second year of this budget.
Yes.
All right. And we've already signed a contract and, and so in order to undo that, we'd have to go back and basically-
Meet and confer again.
Break the contract and, and go through that whole labor relations issue.
We're going through the meet and confer, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Use your reserves, the, um, and that's gonna be, you know, when the state decides to do whatever it is they're gonna do and they are supposed to pay us back and they don't, what's the plan?
Well, I may compare this to, um, what happened in 2004 when the state borrowed money from vehicle license fee. Um, sort of same provisions, they did pay that money back. Um, what we're hearing, um, both from the league, um, and other experts is, is that if the legislature passes that law, that that law would also have the payment within three years and they'll have to pay that back and that will just be automatically, um, included in their appropriations. Um, there's no anticipation that they won't.
And if that's in the law, then what happened to us last time is our auditors insisted that that was, uh, receivable, that we were gonna expect, and then we had to put it on our books that way. So essentially, put it on our records as a receivable and it's come, the money comes out of our reserves for that period of time. It turns out that they don't pay us in three years and it's clearly not gonna ever be paid back, again, that's gonna come out of reserves. It's not, it's a one-time item, kinda like any kind of one-time item is for us and wouldn't come out of operations. It would be, you know, to cut back, I think the number is 2.4 million now, to take that out of our, our operational budget right now would be extremely difficult. We'd be cutting back a lot of services to do that.
Okay. All right, that's all I got. Thanks.
Mr. Mittig, did you wanna make a comment about, um, some of what's been discussed?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a reminder, some good question, good, or good discussion on the, um, positions, funded positions, unfunded. You go to page 290 of the, um, budget document, there's a good history of the funded positions and it clearly delineates department by department, year by year, the total number of positions and the changes. So you can see how the drop in total positions from, including police, from 596 to 560 is delineated, so we've lost 34 funded positions. And, um, the council members are correct, we haven't actually laid anybody off and that's been part of the game plan from the very, uh, beginning. So, uh, we've been able to avoid actually, um, doing layoffs and that, that is our plan going forward. There's some questions too about the salaries and all that, and the council member just pointed out, we have multi-year labor contracts. I'd like to remind the council that the employee, the actual salary levels, it's, it's within the, the, the market, it's, um, pretty much in, in the middle of the pack. So I wanna make it clear, it's not like we're out of line with the market, um, and some positions actually are, are behind. Um, and employees have stepped up and, and this organization, uh, has avoided the temptation, I keep saying this, over the last several years of adding new positions, new programs or services. Others in this county, uh, and in the region have added new programs and services over the past five years and they're having to, to cut those back today and they're really struggling. Uh, we also do not do the enhanced retirements. I always like to point this out, that it saves the taxpayers millions of dollars. Um, several cities have done that and, and counties too, and now they're, they're really struggling with that. Also, we didn't lose any money in the stock market or other bad investments, so we're in good shape there. So our employees have really stepped up. John had talked about the, the brainstorming action group, whatever the proper name is. So the employees came up with some great ways to, to do more with less and the employees are having to, to take on more work and we wanted to ensure that they are competitive in the marketplace. They are clearly not above the marketplace. Actually, the same is true with the, the council member compensation. So I just wanted to point that out. Excellent work by, by staff getting to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mittig. There are, uh, no speakers, no cards, no additional comments. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a, uh, motion. Mr. Dr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mayor Glancy. Um, I move the, again, with, uh, with appreciation and congratulations to, uh, to all of the staff that works so diligently to bring us a, a balanced budget in these economic, times of economic uncertainty. Um, with the staff, the staff recommendation to adopt resolution adopting the annual city operating and capital improvement program budgets, uh, attachment one and, uh, item two, the redevelopment agency to adopt the resolution adopting the, the annual redevelopment agency operating and capital improvement budget.
Thank you. Comments to the motion?
You know, I have one comment, actually. Um, I think an awful lot of consternation has been generated by the condition and the effect that the economy's had on our general fund. Uh, everyone knows we've experienced a rather tremendous decrease in sales tax revenue. Uh, we've also experienced a significant decrease in development dollars and other areas where, uh, where we've had some fall off. It really affects the general fund tremendously and what we need to do, I think it points out the necessity of our ensuring that our general fund is, uh, a little more secure. But, uh, anyway, with that, maker of the motion? None? Uh, please vote.
Motion carries 4-1. Councilmember and board member Bill De La Pena dissenting.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Madam Clerk, will you please give us the results of the tabulation?
The results of the landscape and lighting assessment ballots were cast in favor of the district as follows. Yes, in the amount of $3,809.72. No, in the amount of $22.68.
So, Mr. Fox, how'd you like to make a motion? Yeah, A, A. So we have-
All right. Then I would, uh, move items, um, three and four A.
Okay. Five and six?
Five and six.
Right. More comments to the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Okay. 10A is continued or removed? Redevelopment Agency reports, we have none. Committee Commission Board reports, we have none. Council issues, recommendations, follow-up on meetings, um, League California Cities, Ms. Irwin, if you do the league, I'll do the, uh, AB 1, 2, 3, 4.
All right. Uh, Dr. Glancy and I went down to San Diego, uh, a couple of weeks ago. There were a lot of excellent sessions. Uh, the major focus was on the state budget and, uh, strategies for trying to, um, politic our legislators for allowing us to keep our money, basically. And we also went to a press conference with the mayor of San Diego, again, on the same, uh, issue, trying to keep the state from taking our money. Uh, there were also, uh, good sessions on logging, keeping our residents informed, being transparent through the internet and, um, overall, a very good conference.
Thank you. And I, uh, I had the opportunity to sit through AB 1234, um, once again. Um, the importance is what we all know. You know, be aware of the Brown Act, uh, be very careful of what you do, um, use besides good sense, a good ethical, uh, background. Uh, and you need to be, probably, one needs to be more aware of what the appearance is rather than what the actual action is. So it's, uh, it's a heads up on, uh, running a clean ship. And it's a shame that when this bill was enacted, that it didn't include the legislature in Sacramento, because they really could use it a lot more than what the communities could. That is an editorial. Um, Dr. Gillette?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, 1234 Compliance for Public Safety and Crime Prevention Steering Committee of the National League of Cities that I attended, uh, last week. Uh, public safety, regional resource sharing and collaboration, this was an item that we, uh, brought to the, uh, National League of Cities. Uh, it's the, uh, it's becoming increasingly more important as budgets get tighter and taxes are shrinking. A few cities are considering sharing functions, equipment purchasing and even investigations. Common hurdle to regional collaboration is merging jurisdictions that are not used to working together or have, uh, different approaches to policing. Uh, using our situation as an example, where we have 10 incorporated cities and a county operation and five of those contracts, five of those cities are contracts to a central law enforcement agency. Uh, Fusion Centers, the Department of Homeland Security and the Department of Justice made presentations on the importance of Fusion Centers. Purpose of the Fusion Center would be to share information and intelligence amongst state, local and federal law enforcement agencies to cover all crimes and hazards. The committee will be drafting a policy language on Fusion Centers at the fall meeting and the, uh, the closest Fusion Center for us is in the, uh, in the community region of Los Angeles. There are currently 17 Fusion Centers across the country. That will be expanding to probably close to 50 within a year or so. Uh, swine flu, Department of Homeland Security's intergovernmental office discussed local experience with the recent H1N1 swine flu. National League, uh, cities prepare a guide for cities and safeguarding their communities by supporting public health responders and assisting in any public facility closures. And finally, a major issue was, uh, the national drug policy. The committee engaged in preliminary discussions about updating and reviewing the national, the existing National League of Cities drug policy. Drug policy involves a broad range of topics from medical marijuana dispensaries, drug treatment programs, drug smuggling from the border, narcotics enforcement. Due to its large scope, discussion on the drug policy will be continued at the fall meeting.
Thank you.
Ask, ask or receive and file?
Good. Uh, city manager, follow-up report?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no, um, follow-up items. I do wanna make the council aware that the Laker game is in the final two minutes and Lakers are up by two, 99-97. That is somewhat dated, a couple of-
(inaudible).
Maybe this is not a Kodak moment, but some, some of you find that information helpful. The next, next council meeting is on June 23rd. Uh, three public hearings, uh, two dealing with, um, portable housing projects, uh, one, uh, many mansions on Quinta Vista Lane. This is a land use element amendment for that project to move forward. And the other has to do with, again, a many mansions project at Hillcrest and Los Villas, an owner participation agreement. And then finally, the third public hearing will be on the film permit ordinance. Uh, staff is coming back to council on that one. That's it. By way of city manager, follow-up?
Thank you very much. Um, city attorney will announce closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of staff and the viewing public. The council will be going into closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54, 956.9, subsection B, potentially two cases. Um, item B is anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code 54, 956.9, subsection C, one case. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, 1200 Newberry LLC versus City of Thousand Oaks pursuant to government code section 54, 956.9A. And lastly, um, existing litigation vows, Seattle Mobile Estates LTD versus City of Thousand Oaks pursuant to government code 54, 956.9, subsection A. And if there is anything that needed to be reported out, it will, we don't believe there will be, but it would be reflected in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Uh, tonight, we're adjourning in honor of Sean Davis, son of Virginia and Moss Davis. Virginia has been a, uh, former City of Thousand Oaks planning commissioner and has been extremely active in our community as a supporter for many years. Sean is a graduate of T.O. High School, was an attorney. He was married and had one daughter, Kelsey, who was the light of his life. Kelsey would be graduating from college in December. She's an all-star soccer player, as a goalie, who has just been called up by the women's national team to try out. Sean is survived by his two brothers, Moss and Casey, his parents, his wife, Darcy and daughter, Kelsey. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, I send our sincerest condolences to Sean's family. Uh, he'll be deeply, deeply missed. So with that, we will adjourn to our regular scheduled meeting for June 23rd.